Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Recording is in progress. So it is September 21st of 2021. We're going to call the City of Cortland Common Council Meeting to Order and ask everybody to please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, public comments, people that would like to address the council, we ask the comments are limited to three minutes in length, but they are relevant to city issues. And when they are directed to council, it is to council. And we are limiting to three minutes. First up, I'd like to recognize Dr. Gigi Peterson. And I'm looking for you on the screen, you're gonna have to unmute yourself, Dr. Peterson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tobin, and thank you very much, fellow council members. I know you have a full agenda and I have a short time. I speak as a resident of Cortland and not a representative of my employer. I'm deeply concerned about COVID spread and I care about my neighbors. And I request that next meeting's agenda include discussion of the COVID situation at the college and that guests not be limited to the official college spokespeople. Employees and students have testimony and documentation to provide. We are concerned that official statements often confuse and mislead. Our local community needs accurate information to be able to make safe decisions. There are some dimensions of a crisis that I hope you will investigate and take action on. Vaccination requirements. The Cortland Standard reported in early August, no vaccination, no in-person attendance. That is not true, at least until October 11th, when finally most students will be fully vaccinated. Only 57% of students arrived fully vaccinated. And that's not going to stop the spread if other safety measures are not addressed. Physical distancing is not happening as it should. Students are crammed into many classrooms like sardines as the administration set room capacity at pre-COVID levels. They continue to insist that pre-COVID teaching and work expectations apply and have communicated no contingency plans. Testing is also inadequate. Surveillance testing is randomized and not all students are tested and some have trouble accessing individual tests on campus and off. Tracing raises questions and we need to hear from the county health department. The single college message drawn this raises red flags. Reporting of cases is also a problem as campus statements in the SUNY tracker are not in alignment and both leave out certain groups. Thank you for your attention. As a Cortland resident, I implore you to protect our community by demanding accuracy and accountability about these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Next up, Cristela Yanta.
Hi, good evening, I'm Cristela Yanta, I'm the United Way Executive Director. I usually listen on the meetings and in the ward reports, I hear from the common council about different issues that come up in our streets, our parks, our downtown, and sometimes with SUNY Cortland students. So I wanted to take a minute to share what we have coming up tomorrow. It's our 26th Annual United Way Day of Caring and Wendy T-Bolt Memorial Food Drive. This impacts more than one ward, so I thought it was worth mentioning during public comment period to the entire council. Tomorrow, we have, we've had over 20 businesses collecting food, including CFCU Credit Union, Family Counseling, JM Murray Center, NBT Bank, St. Mary's School, Seven Valleys Health Coalition, YMCA, and the third grade class at Smith School. This group normally comes and helps us sort food at Bodri Park. This year, I will have to go to them to pick up food that they have already collected and sorted for us. Child Development Center will be sorting food to go out to 10 different food pantries throughout Cortland County. We also have some projects that we're doing tomorrow, three different areas. Intertech, Gutters Lumber, SUNY Cortland students will be cleaning the landscape that's out in front of the Ramada, pulling those weeds and putting down some mulch to work on that corner of Clinton Ave. The city staff will work with volunteers from the Carpenters Union 277. Intertech, Viant, SUNY Cortland students, they will work socially distanced outside at the Yaman Park Beach area to renovate the outdoor showers and benches at the Yaman Beach. They will install material also to prevent the birds from nesting in that porch-covered area along the walkway in front of the bathrooms. Realtors from Yaman Real Estate, Molina Healthcare, and SUNY Cortland students will be painting outside at the Salvation Army. And another group of carpenters from the union will be helping inside with a little reconstruction project for the warming center that's housed at the Salvation Army. 45 McGrath High School students will be doing projects in the village outside with hosts there in that community. And on Friday afternoon, SUNY Cortland students will gather at Salvation Army and United Way and walk toward each other on Main Street, collecting trash and picking up a lot of debris that's been left in a couple of the streets on Main Street, Clinton Ave, Court, and Church Street. So that's taking place Friday afternoon. The mission statement of the United Way is to improve the lives of individuals and families in Cortland by uniting the resources of donors, volunteers, and agencies. And I wanted to share this as an example of how the Day of Caring kicks off our campaign and makes an impact in the city with all of the, uniting all these resources from all these agencies and groups. So I wanted to share that with everybody.
Very good. Cristela, thank you very much. Thank you for what you do as well.
Hey Mayor, Mayor?
That's Bruce Tyler.
Yeah, Cristela, I couldn't keep up with all that. Are those all listed on your, on your United Way website or could you send us a list of those?
I will send you a list. It is not on our site, we are down staff as well, so I will send a list.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very good. Is there anybody present that would like to address council that has not had the opportunity to sign up? All right, seeing none, hearing none for public comments. We have a couple of proclamations. First proclamation, October of 2021, as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So whereas each year during the month of October, the City of Cortland joins the nation in celebration of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And we take this as an opportunity to recognize the abilities and the accomplishments of workers with disabilities and acknowledge the efforts made to enhance opportunity and equal employment for individuals with disabilities through legislation such as the American with Disabilities Act and the Workplace Innovation and Opportunities Act. And while we've made tremendous progress over the last 29 years since the signing of the ADA, there still are significant challenges that give people with disabilities an alarming unemployment rate of nearly 65%, which is one of the highest of any group in America. Fair access to employment is a fundamental right of every American, including the estimated 63 million people in the country who are living with disabilities. And whereas we grow stronger as a community when each person feels the dignity conferred by having the ability to support themselves and their families through productive work. Our community is dedicated to ensuring that all residents with disabilities can live life fully with greater opportunities and independence through support of employment-first initiatives, equal wages, and enhanced supportive and customized employment programs. Toward this end, our community continues to take action toward equal employment for all individuals regardless of ability. And whereas we call on all of our citizens to celebrate the contributions of individuals with disabilities to our workplaces and our community and to promote the employment of individuals with disabilities to create a better and more inclusive community, one in which every person is rightly recognized for their abilities and accomplishments. Furthermore, we urge employers as they seek to fill positions to embrace the richness of our community's diversity by considering the talents of all workers, especially workers with disabilities. Now, therefore, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Cortland, hereby proclaim October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Another proclamation is for Anti-Bullying Awareness Month. Whereas we must safeguard schools and communities for our children and through our recognition of the serious issues that face them day, each day, offer our children an environment that holds promise and security. And whereas 280,000 students are physically attacked each month and many organizations, school districts, educators, and parents have publicly expressed concern about bullying of children. And each day, it's estimated that there's 160,000 children who will refuse to go to school because they dread the physical and verbal aggression of their peers and the loneliness that comes from being excluded and made the target of rumors and cyberbullying. And many more students attend school in a chronic state of anxiety. And it's important that we acknowledge and heighten awareness about the serious issues and the negative effects of bullying, including the long-term damage that it can cause in our youth, as well as the risks of teenage suicide. And we need to provide a safe, physical, and emotional environment. It's a significant goal and a personal responsibility of every individual. So it's time to stand up for character and down to bullying. So I proclaim as Mayor of the City of Cortland that the month of October is also designated as Anti-Bullying Awareness Month. And this is a symbol of our commitment to the year-round struggle against bullying. And we call on all of our citizens to make awareness and prevention a daily exercise to help put an end to bullying. And obviously, that addresses a lot in terms of the schools, but all the stress we've all experienced the last year and a half, it's more than just kids in school. We are also proclaiming October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This year, more than 268,600 women and 2,670 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in America. And the heartache and the pain of this disease will touch way too many of our mothers, fathers, daughters, sisters, and way too many families are gonna bear this burden. So during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we want to recognize all those who know the anguish of breast cancer and know that we stand beside you and behind the efforts to improve care and bring attention to this dreadful disease. It's important to know that when breast cancer is caught early, treatment works best and survival rates increase. And that's why women and men should be familiar with the risk factors and symptoms of the disease and speak with their healthcare provider about the risk of breast cancer and the importance of recommended mammograms. And you can learn more by visiting cancer.gov. Cancer.gov. Today, more Americans are surviving breast cancer than ever before, but there is still work to do. Researchers are working every day to improve the lives of patients, survivors, and their families. And this month, as we honor those who are lost to breast cancer, let us join with the loved ones who celebrate their memory and the patients who battle this disease every day, as well as our nation's advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers. Together, we renew our commitment to better prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer. And we continue our work toward a future free from cancer in all of its forms. Now, in recognition of the importance of bringing awareness to this disease and of early detection, as Mayor of the City, I, Brian Tobin, hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I urge all citizens to join in activities that will increase awareness of what Americans can do to prevent breast cancer. And a fourth, and just as salient as all of our proclamations, October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So whereas one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and there's approximately 15 and a half million children that are exposed to domestic violence every year. And when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leave marks on the family, on friends, and the community at large. Domestic violence is widespread and it's devastating to society as a whole, but particularly women and children. And violence against women and children is a prevalent social ill due to the historical imbalance of power in gender and age. So the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people. It crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And it's sustained by societal differences. So the crime also violates an individual's privacy, their dignity, security, and their humanity due to the systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And victims should have help, help to find the compassion, the comfort, and the healing that they need. And domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. So it's important to recognize the compassion and the dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence and let its work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. So we as a community pledge that we treat people with respect and dignity and as equals. And in recognition of this important work that is done by domestic violence programs and victims' service providers, I, Brian Tobin, hereby proclaim the month of October in 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the YWCA's Aid to Victims of Violence to work toward the elimination of violence against women and girls. So there was four proclamations there, I apologize for not asking if there was anybody present to speak to the first, one, two, or three. Third, is there anybody who'd like to comment on any of the four proclamations? Mayor's report, I'm gonna keep it fairly short and simple. I'm gonna ask council for an executive session at the end to discuss the personnel matter. And no action expected. And one other thing to report, we do have an official release. There is a lawsuit that was recently settled and in favor of the city. And I was very gratified, it was the outcome that I and many others were expecting, but ratified to see that it reinforces when the city does business with people from the community and a number of people in terms of landlords and others, that we are consistent, we are fair, and we hold everybody accountable to the same standard. And bear in mind, we have some people who have done a tremendous job of being property owners and taking care of their properties, which obviously benefits everyone. And they do a great job of taking care of their tenants. Unfortunately, we also have some that like to push the lines and we're having some challenges with a couple. And in this lawsuit, I think helped to reinforce the fact that we are doing what we're supposed to, when we're supposed to, and we will continue to hold everybody to the same standard. Minutes, we had minutes from our last meeting, that was September 7th. Do we have a motion from somebody on council to consider filing the minutes as presented? John Bennett, second, Katie Siliman. Council members, I'm going to remind you, if you can please turn your microphones on so we can hear you. So we have a motion, we have support. Are there any questions or potential corrections for the minutes from our last meeting? Hearing none, seeing none, everybody in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye. Give me a wave.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, and I believe that's 7-0.
Brian, before you get started?
Yes?
I wanna add a couple quick items at the end, we can do it after executive session, but we need to take action.
All right, Troy, what do you got?
What's that?
What, what do you have?
I wanna allocate some money for city hall cleanup. And the possible action of removing the dumpsters behind Downtown Delhi. We can discuss that on 16 if you'd like, or we can make it a separate item.
I would suggest that we add it to 16.
Thanks, John.
Very good, I was just going to ask him, a little bit slow writing. And those dumpsters on Alterment Haskell Place, that is the official
Correct.
name of the road that is behind Main Street and it travels from Orchard down to Westport. All right. We got approval of the minutes. Item number one, discussion and update regarding the city's proposed purchase of the Parker School. Tried to frame this in two ways, update from the meeting and possible timeline for action. I was uncertain in terms of council if there was anything that you really did want addressed. But with your indulgence, we could use the PowerPoint that was created a couple of years ago and quickly touch through that. Council, would you like to go through the PowerPoint that gives an overview of the whole project? Yes, I would. Okay, let me see if I do this right. How are we seeing this?
Yeah.
There it is. All right, I've got the green outline. The downside here is I can't see everybody else as well, so council members, just give me a holler. I'm gonna need a verbal if you want to speak up. Oh, okay. So Parker School Task Force, when we were alerted that the school district was going to potentially close one or two elementary schools, and then when it was done and the decision was finalized, I spoke with Michael Hous, the school superintendent at the time, and we came, the council asked to form a task force that would talk about the structure and figure out what to do, what would be a good recommendation moving forward. And this made a lot of sense because when you look at large properties, in particular ones with buildings, it's good to control what happens to them because there's times when things do not go well. And when you look throughout the city, and I would even say beyond our borders, a lot of the larger properties that have had positive things happen to them is because of the city taking action. Matt Cook was very involved in Buck D. Mears and untangling the financial mess that was preventing that from being utilized. We've got brownfields that have necessitated the city's involvement. We've got a property that shut down on the East End and our code department did an excellent job of making sure that when it was shut down, there was no chance of contamination. And then as work's been being done, that remediation was done appropriately. And there's even projects that have taken place outside of the city, for example, Burn Dairy and the wastewater treatment plant's ability to take not just the waste, but the waste was crucial for that. And I would even say that Gutters Park, the ball fields, and what the Youth Bureau has done in terms of managing, has kinda helped make that go. So big projects are a local government responsibility, in my opinion. So this group got together and given an overview. Based upon the community listening sessions, there was several, not just one or two, there were several, they were held at different times, different days, different locations. And we solicited four ideas, and there was over 22, the ideas that came forward. Majority of the community was not interested in housing and interested in how can it be used for kids. So then the task force members were the ones that approached the youth service providers. And all these agencies were given the opportunity to present ideas and to see if it was viable. So meetings were held with interested parties, the three, it started boiling down to the Cortland Christian Academy, the YWCA of Cortland, and CAPCO. And as I think most people may be aware, I am the husband of the Executive Director for the YWCA. So this is good that this was a task force-oriented job and was done independently. Need. There's over 6,000 kids in Cortland County that are under the age of 12. And when we start talking daycare, it's different than education. When you start talking early education, we're talking under the age of five. Total license capacity is less than 25%, significantly lower number than that 6,000. Total number under the age of six, slightly under 3,000. And there's only enough spots or slots for about 957 kids. Provider need, YWCA would combine the two locations that they previously had, and they were serving up to 108 kids aged six weeks to five years. And they do before and after school, and they do summer camps for older kids. CAPCO, Head Start, Early Head Start, and there were three benefits there. Christian Academy, unfortunately, due to some financial restrictions, were not able to continue. So then it narrowed down to the YW and CAPCO. And there's information about their impact on kids, what they do, and there are organizations that have a long and storied history in our community. These are not fly-by-night, these are organizations that have been benefiting our community for decades. So the workup was done, what would an annual budget potentially be? And at the time, I believe this was 2019, talked about staffing, talked about all other costs, annual costs, less than $170,000 a year. So in terms of a budget, and budgets change over time, obviously, but there were agencies, each agency and what the total cost could be. The projected capital budget at the time, broken out in one or two years, basically to get it up and running, five years, and then 10-year needs. What would that total dollar amount be? Looked at potential funding sources, and the one at the bottom, legislative grants, I think we are all aware, there was $1.1 million. When the Speaker for the Assembly came through and worked with Barbara Lifton, Barbara Lifton was able, as our Assembly Member, to secure us $1.1 million. And there's other things that are going on in terms of the AEI and the WDI. Mr. Tyler?
Could you go back one frame? I was trying to write some numbers down, and you went much faster than I could write. I wanted, I just wanna have those in front of me as we're discussing this. Just give me a second.
So the numbers are good, but the numbers most likely have changed, will change, because that happens over time. And it also happens with estimates, and an important point here, until an architect and engineer is able to look at it, you know, we don't, these are rough estimates.
Yep.
They're accurate, they were done, a lot of this was done by an architect, this is not back-of-the-napkin stuff.
And what was the, what was the pre-cost to move in, was that around $300,000? Go slide before that? Go back one more, please. If you could go back one more slide? Just one.
Pre-moving.
Pre-moving, okay, 460, okay. Okay, thanks, Mayor, I got it.
Very good, and then the Red Sea Round 9, there was a, they call it an incentive grant from the state, and it can be received in portions, and it is up to $500,000, but it can only be 20% of whatever is expended. So whatever is spent, there's an opportunity for 20% of that in additional funding.
Brian, it's not additional funding.
Childcare priority for funding. So our current governor, who was Lieutenant Governor, and this is 2019, Lieutenant Governor Hokel has been pushing for access to affordable, high-quality childcare. Benefits of childcare that is high quality, there's a lot that goes into that. I hope that we all agree that childcare is an important It's important for the quality of life. And there was discussion about community impact, economic impact on our workforce. And I believe we may have Bob Haight present from the Chamber of Commerce who can talk a little bit about the impact and what he is hearing from businesses. There's also discussion about the economics of early childhood investment. Additional benefits, I think this one's important between, out of the four, additional benefits for at-risk children, quality programs can save as much as $16 for every dollar invested. So I'd like to share a personal story that my youngest going through childcare was able to be evaluated and assessed in terms of if there were any cognitive developments, any motor developments, any speech developments that were of concern. Any motor developments, any speech developments that were of concern. So being able to do this early leads to early intervention, which helps to avoid issues later in life. And I believe this was the quote that was at the end. And Chrissy Gambetta was the chair for the task force, is the chair for the task force. Um, I believe based upon a message I received earlier that she was unable to join us. And if I can move some things around so that I can stop sharing my screen. Ready to open the floor up. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? There are some members of the task force who are here who are present. If you want to ask questions or if you want discussion. Katie Solomon.
I know that there are some people on council who have some concerns and now is the time to ask those questions because we have the task force members here to answer those questions. But I would just like to say that, you know, this past year has been a time when a lot of us have been looking at our privilege. And affordable quality childcare should not come down to your privilege. Should not come down to your ability to pay more money for a better situation. Cortland is the kind of town where only one parent worked for a long time. Like a lot of other small towns. Or then when both parents were working, we've, we're lucky enough to have a lot of people who are multi-generational here. But um, these places, it's all hands on deck, everybody's got to be working. And you can't count on grandma to take care of your, of your children anymore, or mom and dad. And as a community, we need to support childcare. I work in an elementary school and I see the effects of um, kids who come from homes where they don't, you know, nobody's reading to them. They haven't had exposure to early childhood education. And it's really a deficit these days, you guys. Kids are expected to read sooner and to be able to do more with old reading. Uh, it used to be by four, fourth grade, you were reading for information, you were done learning how to read and you were learning for information. Or reading for information rather. Now that starts in third grade. So it's very hard to catch up as a little kid. And so much is thrown on the teachers. A lot of the exposure to simple counting to ten and knowing your ABCs and how to write your own name, how to hold a pencil, how to sit on a carpet with other kids. All of this could be achieved with early childhood education. And for those who have infants and, you know, nobody wants to leave their baby with somebody else. And I I know people who have shopped around Cortland looking for the best situation they can, looking for private childcare providers. And we have a number of really good ones, but clearly not enough to close the gap. We need more. And I think that this is an important priority for the city, so I'll be quiet now and let somebody else talk.
Mr. Bennett.
I'm not gonna say much because I've said some things in the past. Um, but I want everybody to know out there, everybody knows the importance of childcare. We do know that. Okay, so I'm not gonna be a downer. Everything that all the persons Solomon just said has been said one thousand four hundred and thirty-two times, okay? And everybody on council, everybody knows how important childcare is. But here's a couple of facts that some, some people in some emails I've got and have said, any minute Guthrie might kick the YW out of Here We Grow. Now, I've spoken very recently to somebody on the Guthrie Board of Directors. No way at all. Guthrie is letting Here We Grow and the YW stay there as long as they need that building. Number two. YWCA and CAPCO have said from the get-go, no additional children will be in the childcare programs from what their pre-COVID numbers were. So all this talk about they'll be able to take on more kids, both the YW and CAPCO has said no to that. Maybe down the road, maybe not down the road. But as of now, they're not taking on any additional kids from what again, the pre-COVID numbers were. Um, this idea that also when people say this will bring young professionals into Portland County. Now, what will bring young professionals into the city of Portland or Portland County will be lower housing pro- prices compared to what is in Tompkins County or Ithaca, okay? Um, I'm not gonna go on about the condition of the building and grants and things like that. Um, but again, too, this misnomer that some of us who are concerned about the building are against childcare is far from the truth. Again, childcare is very important. Again, I have a daughter and a son-in-law who got very lucky a couple of years ago when the Homer School District opened up additional pre-K. Okay? Maybe the city schools, school district could open up more additional pre-K and early um care convenience and after-school care. Okay, I think Homer might have more than the city of Portland. Again, that's all I've got to say for right now.
So I have a request from the executive director of the YWCA and full disclosure, I am the husband of the executive director for the YWCA, Kelly Toman.
Yes, good, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight. And I just had a couple of responses to Mr. Bennett's um uh, data points. So uh, Here We Grow is a facility that we um have in collaboration with Guthrie Portland Regional Medical. Um, he is correct that Guthrie has been overly generous and a very strong collaborator and partner in the initiative to expand early learning childcare in Portland's community. And I do think it's worth noting that their participation. Um, and it's not just a participation of letting us have the building, but there is a financial participation that they're giving back to the community by allowing us to be at this facility. And um, they are able to allow us to stay there for five years. So that's the lease agreement that we currently have in place with them. And at the end of that five years, it is expected that we would be able to find a new home, but they recognize the need to provide this transitional space right now. To open up a childcare center in Portland or in anywhere for that matter, you're looking at over a million dollars based on the regulations that um, we need to abide by OCFS and the number of kids that we have in the rooms and the square footage and I won't bore you with all of those details. So they've been more than generous, but we are on a five-year timeline there. Um, the second point about the expansion of childcare, I I think, you know, the, the point here is that Parker School is not going to solve the problem of childcare or early learning commu- uh, early learning in our Portland community. Um, Parker School is going to allow providers to um, collect themselves to be able to rebound back from this pandemic that's changed the landscape of childcare drastically in our community and communities that surround us. And so it's an opportunity to be able to um, open back up slots that we've closed. So we were at ninety-nine slots prior to the pandemic. Right now we're at forty. Um, we actually have one of our centers closed and I'd be happy to answer questions um, offline. I don't think that really matters exactly for this conversation. Um, but we are looking to be able to find a home that we can stabilize our program. And the most important part of this is that we're looking to do this in collaboration with the second leading provider in our community, which is Head Start and CAPCO. So being able to join two very strong organizations together and stabilize the landscape that we have and preserve the landscape that we have is really what this Parker School is going to do for us. And then once we've done that, as we're kind of riding out the landscape changing, um, there's a lot of talk right now at the state level and the federal level about transforming childcare and early learning initiatives in our communities. And boy, are we tuned into that and think that there's real opportunity that we will be able to expand slots. So I think I covered the points I wanted and all the dogs are gonna chime in. Thank you.
And I have a request from Lyndy Glennon, who is the executive director for CAPCO, and she would uh, like to speak. Lyndy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. And again, I I will be happy to answer any questions and anybody that uh, council has. But I did just wanted to respond, actually, you know, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Bennett, but the reality is that, first of all, this has always been a much bigger discussion and to serve a much broader purpose than whether or not Guthrie was going to allow the YWCA to stay at Here We Grow. I think Kelly has spoken to that. When uh, the school district identified that they were closing Parker and as the mayor has already been out there with the task force. When we were approached about what interest we may have, we saw this as an, as an incredible opportunity for our community. Uh, Portland County Community Action Program, CAPCO, uh, immediately in collaborative conversations because we had been working with the YW and another, a number of other uh, efforts anyway. About what could we do if we had a facility like Parker located where it was? Because the community, as you're aware, overwhelmingly weighed into saying that they wanted Parker to remain in that community and to remain for the purpose of child development and child support, not housing. So what could we do together? So we, our conversations have always been about that collaborative opportunity. You know, again, uh, Mr. Bennett, you're right, we don't really need, I hope, at this point, to convince the community what a crisis need childcare is. Uh, and as big as that was when we first started this conversation, I don't even have a word for the catastrophic situation that childcare is now in because of COVID. But we've always looked at this as an incredible positive opportunity to collaboratively work together, to take what Portland County, CAPCO has been doing with Head Start, Early Head Start uh, for the last forty-seven years and the years of experience that the YW has been providing childcare. And how could we build, bring those together and build something bigger and better? And again, Parker provides just such an incredible opportunity. We envision classrooms and I think Beth Ann wanted to speak to, you know, the numbers. Uh, we are in fact, gonna be serving a different number than what we talked about three years ago. Things change over that period of time. But we also saw that the, having the kitchen there, we would be able to take control of our own food prep and, and address with our children. We immediately recognized that creating and developing professional provo- care childcare providers is cr- another critical need in our community. So we started looking at how we could get grants and funding to, to make sure that our staff had that kind of training. We looked at this as an opportunity to build state-of-the-art classrooms. We looked at this as an opportunity to say under the same roof, there's gonna be space. Uh, the mayor mentioned the opportunity to do early on assessment. So for children that needed early intervention, therapy, play therapy, counseling, music, art, all of those things. We're gonna have the space to bring that together. We've had the opportunity to have conversations with other providers in the community. We know that there's the real opportunity to bring those people into this as well. So we, we, we started looking at this and started addressing, what are the funds out there? What are the funding opportunities? And uh, you know, the mayor also showed in the slide show there, we have right now through the support and efforts of then Assemblywoman Barbara Lifton, uh, and Speaker Hasty, we have point three million dollars committed to this project. Um, their, their money already made uh, there from, from the Empire State Development Corporation. We have been looking for other funds. Uh, we did get, because we worked on this collaboratively. We did get funding from the Alliance for Economic Inclusion, three-year funding to build and develop and certify to early childcare providers and strengthen that workforce. And our vision was not just for that to be CAPCO and the YW, but to open that up to the broader community. Now, we've got that funding. What we don't have is Parker. What we don't have is the space to do that. We're doing what we do, we're adapting, we're gonna go forward with that. We are actively looking for other funding. We're in a place right now where it's really, it's, it's impossible to do that because it's really hard to go to a funder and convince them to give us half a million dollars or one point three million dollars for a site, a building that we don't even have uh, the access to. Um, the one point three million dollars that we keep talking about and has been promised from DASNY. Um, the reason the, the, the city is so critical to this. The school district, the vote was approved, uh, I don't know, I think it's been a year and a half ago now for the district to sell Parker to the city. It needed to be sold to the city because that's how those funds are gonna be available. If the city does not purchase Parker, CAPCO, the YW, we aren't able to access those funds. So by not doing this, we're gonna turn our back on uh, on over one and a half million dollars of funding. So everything right now, I really do feel like, again, we are still in that crisis situation. We are working very, very hard to, to respond to it, to come out of this a stronger, more solid uh, community. We have been talking with a, a group out of um, out of Minnesota who built a very similar community-based uh, uh, ed- uh, early childhood education center like this that became a hub in the community. We know that the same thing can happen with Portland because that's the kind of community that we have. But again, I just, I just go back to, we are now at a place where we really are not able to do anything else. And we are, we're really concerned about losing this funding if we don't move this forward. Uh, right now, you know, we have been able to say to the school district, um, because they're at a place where that, that, they're holding on to Parker because they want this to happen with that facility. But if it's not gonna happen out of fairness to them, they need the opportunity to make other plans. And there are, there are people out there that would purchase Parker and turn it into housing. But the community has overwhelmingly said that they didn't want that. So we, we just need the opportunity to resolve this and decide whether or not we're gonna be able to move forward and make that happen. We, I have an interview, we have an interview one day next week about potentially an other half a million dollars of funding. But again, you know, the question of, you know, if we give you this funding, what are you gonna be able to do with it? It really not, it doesn't look good for us to say, we've got a plan and we know how we would use this, but you know, can you just hold on to it for whatever period of time till we see how this settles out? We really need this to move forward if it's gonna move forward. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Uh, we, uh, Bruce, we can, if, if you're okay with it, would like to go to Beth Ann Weeder.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Yes, I'm okay with that.
Uh, Beth Ann Weeder, if you can introduce yourself to everybody, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Ann Weeder. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening and to speak to you in person. Person. Um, I am the director of the Head Start and the Early Head Start Program for all of Portland County. Um, we have uh, served two hundred and thirty-eight kiddos in Portland County. The Head Start, Early Head Start Program is a program that's built upon a foundation to serve uh, families that are living in poverty. So those are our guidelines for eligibility. Our families that are living and children that are living in poverty. Um, I can tell you right now, our enlo- our enrollment is off. And we're seeing that that is all just because people are at home still. They're, they're not in the workforce, they're not working, they're still at home. But I do know that I have fifty families on a waiting list that are over income for my program. That is a single mother, that is a family of two uh, income earners that don't have childcare in Portland County because they can't find it. It's not there. And it's not there for two reasons. It's there because the workforce isn't there. And it's there because the children don't have childcare. To John's, to John Bennett's point, yes, childcare is very important. I think we've all come to that uh, moment that we understand that for everybody. Um, whether the landscape changes or not, we will never know that until this shakes out. And this is gonna take some time to shake out. But honestly, I feel like I'm on this spinning wheel. And I go round and round because I need people to work. because I need people to work, so I can provide childcare to more people. But if I don't have space and I don't have a workforce, I can't provide childcare. And if I can't provide childcare, people can't go back to work. It's a hamster wheel I'm on every single day. Now, I'm not saying Parker is going to have all the answers for this, but it certainly, I feel in my mind, going to alleviate and open up more possibilities for childcare. Because if the YW and certain components of my program moves into Parker, that will alleviate the spaces that we are in, that we are then still able to occupy. I'm supposed to be in Washington DC right now, advocating on the Hill for childcare. And I can tell you that in the HHS budget that is going through and trying to be passed right now, there is close to a million dollars in just expansion money for early Head Start, because the need is so great. And the talk of the UPK expansion with school districts and in communities that need children to be in schools so they can be ready to enter kindergarten. If we don't start this process from age zero, we are always going to be behind the ball.
Beth Ann, thank you. Bob Haight from the Chamber of Commerce?
Thank you, Council. Happy to be here. And I've spoken with many of you. I sent an email out earlier today. I can reiterate and give some more details about our position and why we have such a position. Thank you for the childcare providers who just spoke. You know, there's a, there's a reason, I think you just got a little flavor, why we refer to them as our local heroes. The job that they're doing for our children, for our families, for our communities, and for our businesses, I can't say enough about it. And the fact that they're doing that and losing money every single year is, is absolutely incredible. So will Parker solve that? Of course not. You've heard that Parker won't solve that. This is a bigger issue than what Parker can solve. But Parker is, is a step in the right direction. It's going to help them to become more efficient so that they can actually provide those services. This is hard to say, coming from a business background, provide those services at less of a loss than what they're currently doing or what they were doing pre-pandemic. How would you like that as a business model, if you have some experience with business? I'm just trying to limit the amount of money we're losing. We know we're going to keep losing. I think the state is going to get this right. The state is going to figure out, childcare, early education starts at the day of birth. It doesn't start when we hit pre-K or when we hit kindergarten. And we need to be able to provide that for families. And, you know, Speaker Hasty was in town here just a couple of weeks ago. And it was interesting when he came into the Chamber of Commerce and he wanted to talk about childcare. So I, I was happy to say to him some of the same things that I'm saying to you right now and the importance. One of you wrote back to my email and, and asked about other businesses who would support this instead of just us as the chamber. I'll, I'll address that in a couple of ways. We surveyed pre-pandemic our members, and one of those questions, it's when we were looking for our legislative priorities, but one of those questions was, is childcare a concern for you or your employees? And two-thirds of the responses at that time said that it was. And that was pre-pandemic, as I said. So that's when we still had more childcare slots available to us. Another thing that we've learned by doing this is it depends at the business who you speak with. So if you're talking to the CEO, which we often want to hear from the CEO or the, or the head of a company or the owner of the company, they are oftentimes insulated from what inadequate early education is doing to their workforce. If you talk to the direct supervisors or to the HR departments, you're going to get a little bit more of the detail. And they're going to be able to tell you, yes, this is definitely an issue for us. So other businesses, yes, I do have testimonials from other businesses who are willing to share them. And I know I can get more. If that's what you're hearing to get support for this project, we have it in our community. In, in my mind, I'm, I'm thinking of Intertech even and their, their HR folks in Bernadette and what she has said to me, both as a mom and as an HR director who's working with, you know, several hundred employees, and, and what that means to her to be able to have adequate childcare. Some members of the community know that this has been a chamber issue and, and that we've been working on this for several years. And I've got a grandma right now, who, her employer has been allowing her to work at home, and she's very appreciative. They have not refilled, totally refilled their offices yet, but they're working towards that and she sees it. Well, part of what she's doing right now is helping with a grandchild. So that mom is doing something similar, part-time at work, part-time at home, and this child is going from mom to grandma. There, I think they're probably doing a great job with this child, but it's not going to continue. And when those two are, are told that they have to be back to work on a regular basis, which is going to happen, one of them is going to have to stay home. I don't want to be part of that family to decide who that's going to be, because that shouldn't have to happen. And, and this is, and they, they bring it up to me because they've been looking for childcare as soon as businesses started opening back up. And, you know, just like Beth Ann said, there's waiting lists. Everybody has waiting lists. So that's what I'm asking for. There are no guarantees that this is going to work, but we know that there is tremendous effort within the state to support these things. As the state looks at this project, looks at the, the volume of people, the multi-agencies, I think when you look at a partnership between the city and the nonprofits, and we're, of course, completely willing to back this, the state is going to look very favorable at this. I think we have a tremendous opportunity. Sorry, I almost feel like a soapbox here, because things, good things are happening in court. You know, I look at Clinton and I look at Main Street, and, and we're going through some pain. But boy, at the end of that pain, it is going to be absolutely wonderful. What happened with Burn Dairy and the partnership through the city that the mayor already brought up. These, these are absolutely wonderful things that are happening. Buck B. Meers being, being sold now and a for-profit business coming in there, who's going to pay taxes again. And Parker School can be added to that list. You have the opportunity to get this right, and other communities are going to be ringing your phone and saying, tell us what you did. We want to do something like it. And sorry, Mayor, I'm going to stop there. But you guys know, I'm always happy to meet over at Brew and buy you a coffee if you want to have more detailed conversations.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. I have a request from Christine Gregory.
Mayor, can, can I get in there sometime too? I go, I'm going to let Chris go, but I'd like to get in after Chris then.
No, that, that's okay, Bruce. You go ahead. I'm, I'm enjoying listening to everyone. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just have a few points that I want to make. First of all, Mayor, thank you for that PowerPoint, um, back in 2019, before I was formally involved. That, that seems like a decade ago, to tell you the truth. It seems so long ago. And I'm glad you were able to, to put that forward again, so we could look at some things and put some things back in front of our mind. Number one, which I had completely forgotten, if I knew it to begin with, is this project was supported by the community. The community was involved in this from the start. This isn't just a few people from top down. You know, the community said, we don't want this. We don't want this. We don't want this. Yes, this is what we want. So I think that's, that's one thing that I think we all need to, to remember. The second thing is, this is a national problem. I, I just read an article today in, in the New York Times. They talked about this is a national problem. Our communities all across the country are going through this. And we have a chance here to address that. We're not going to soften nationally. And, and folks have said, hey, this isn't going to be the panacea for everything with Parker. But it's a start to solve it locally. We are sort of taking the bull by the horns and, and making some, some solutions, create some solutions on our own. And I think that's, to the folks that put the, they were on that task force and did all the hard work, you know, thank you for that. And that's one of the things we have an opportunity to do is to, to address an issue locally that, that's been, every, every community is dealing with. We have an opportunity to have a successful conclusion. The other thing is, uh, this is a private, everybody, the private sector and the public sector supports this. And anybody that's been in government for a while should realize, when you get that kind of a partnership, you're looking at a, probably almost always, you're going to win that. And, and you don't always get public and private on the same page like we have with this. And I, I appreciate Bob coming in and even mentioning some companies specifically that are supportive of this. And I think the community needs to know this. This, this isn't something that everybody says, okay, we're just going to take a bunch of city tax dollars and, and use it. That, that's far from the truth. That's not at all what we're doing. This money is coming from the state. And as I understand it, there's also a, a little over a million dollars also in the pipeline from other sources. So there, I do believe the money is, is going to be there. And the budget that you told us about, Mayor, and those agencies, that they, they can operate this, I think that's important. And lastly, I'll just say that, I don't see any reason why we can't keep moving this forward, given that so many people in the, in the community want it to happen. And there's lots of safeguards that's going to, that's going to help the city. So what I hear is, well, I don't want the city to have to pay $2 million. Well, the city's not going to pay $2 million. The city is not going to pay $2 million. The city will not be paying $2 million. People need to hear that. This, this funding is in place. And, you know, if for some reason it all goes south, then we sell the building for $92. You know, I don't see it as being a huge issue or something that's going to stop us. And so I'll stop with that. I think I do want to push this forward and keep getting the facts and see if the rest of that money comes in and see if we can't create some real quality programming over there at Parker School.
And Bruce, to the, the PowerPoint, the Executive Director for the YWCA, who some of you may know, must know, she's the person that put together the PowerPoint. Credit where she due. I just, I just read it.
I, I appreciate it, but it does, that seems like so long ago right now, Mayor. So thanks for putting that out there. And thank, thank the Director of the YWCA.
Very good. And we have Bo Harbin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Tobin, and members of the Common Council for letting me speak tonight. Um, I am a Cortland County legislator, but more importantly for this discussion, I'm a member of the Parker School Task Force. Um, and, you know, there's been a lot of work done with the task force over the years, working with the community. We heard loud and clear from the community um, over and over again, that they wanted to see kids back in Parker School. Um, that my constituents in the second legislative district did not want to see Parker School become, as we've seen many other old schools across Cortland and across upstate New York, become apartment buildings or become businesses. They really wanted it to become a place and remain a place after 91 years of a place for children to learn and grow. And we actually, just as a reminder, and we've kind of tap danced or, or mentioned this, but the community has spoken loud and clear. We had a referendum on this last year. 78.88% of everyone in the enlarged Cortland City School District, and yes, I understand that includes people in Cortlandville, but 78.88%, a higher percentage even than approved the Cortland Free Library Budget. It's like voting against puppies. More people supported the Parker School initiative and the sale from the school districts to the city for $91 than supported any other initiative on that referendum. I've heard consistently from my community members and from my constituents and from others across Cortland County, that we would like to see this project continue to move forward. We would like to see a place for our children to learn and grow, to bring these community entities together with the YWCA and CAPCO to energize their collective power and really move this forward. And so I would urge the Common Council, as a member of this task force, to continue what we started on this journey, really bring it to fruition. Let us finish this phase of, of the program. Make the sale available and allow these organizations to move forward so that we can then take it from there and continue to the journey uh, to bring Parker School back and being a source of education for our youngest community members. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Bo. Tom Michaels has his hands up. And then Christine Gregory? If, if that works, Tom?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I don't think anybody's disputing that uh, we don't have a need for, for childcare and early childhood development programs. I think what everybody's concerned is whether the funding sources are stable enough to support this for five years, and, and whether that we're able to absorb anything that happens to occur that is beyond our, our control. Uh, what, what I would like to see in, is some updated financials. I, I see where they stopped right around 2019. I'd like to know uh, what the agencies did here the last two years, uh, before we really sink our teeth into this.
So when you say what the agencies did, are you thinking their annual reports? Or this project in particular? Can you clarify for me, Tom?
No, uh, there was, there was financials that were provided, starting, I think, around 2014. Uh, and all the way up to 2019. I'd like to see 2020 and 21 if we can.
Twenty-one might be difficult at this point, but we can,
Right.
CAPCO and the YW, what from 2020, where, where they're at in terms of their annual reports? Uh, these are nonprofits that are obligated, I believe, to make public a lot of this stuff regardless, so.
Yes.
Okay. So the request, and I also heard, you know, the vision in terms of longer-term funding. I get that. So I'm writing that down and come back and discuss that, I think, in the future.
Yep. Okay. That's fine. And Bob, I want to take you up on that coffee here sometime this week, if you don't mind. And I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Uh, Christine Gregory?
Here I am. Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm not quite sure what I can add to what has already been said. Um, I found all, you know, all the speakers extremely moving. And as a lifelong educator myself, well, 50 years or so at this point, I was especially moved by our childcare providers and, and their emphasis on how important early childhood education is. I know Janet Griffin is also a member of the task force. She's also here tonight. And both she and I, as, as educators, have come to realize how extremely important early childhood education is. Janet at a younger, you know, elementary age and me seeing, you know, at the high school age, how much support a lot of our kids need. And, and I too hope that the council moves forward and agrees to purchase the school. Um, I, I would like to add one bit of information on the vote that Bo was referring to. Of that vote, almost 70%, 69% were city residents, because I know that there was some question about the number of out-of-the-city district people who voted. And so we looked into that. And of the 2,908 voters, 2,012 of them were residents of the city of Cortland. So that speaks very loudly that I think this is what the city wants to see happen, the city residents. Um, if, if anybody has any question that they think a school member could address, you know, Janet or I would be glad to do that.
Good. Thank you, Christine. And I do have a request from Janet Griffin. Janet? You're muted.
There we go. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. As Christine just said, the, the figures that she had were just the Cortland City residents. But don't forget also that Cortlandville and Virgil, who also voted, uh, do indeed send their children to daycare. So it's, it's our entire county that uses our facilities. Uh, as far as the, the sale of, of Parker School, I did hear a comment that actress said that the building wasn't worth saving. And I was really a little disturbed by that, being that a school building has quite stringent protocols that they must follow. And I'm not saying that everything is perfect, but we do have those protocols in place uh, that keep schools better than my home. Uh, the other thing is that honestly, after teaching for honestly, after teaching for thirty-six years, it takes a village to raise a child. And our children are absolutely worth this investment. And Parker School, having a playground already there, having bathrooms in classrooms, having a wonderful park across the street, I really just don't know what more we could ask for. This is wonderful. Money is always gonna be a problem no matter what. But with the grants that have been offered through Barbara Lifton, through uh, Assemblyman Heasty, I think we're, we should just give it a shot. We've waited, and as Lindy said, the school district has waited. Uh, it has been a long pandemic. We certainly weren't expecting all of this to happen, but it did. And Virgil School is getting close to becoming something different. And I don't want that to happen to Parker. Thank you.
Janet, thank you. There's two more hands up uh, in the interest of time. Gonna ask people if there's, maybe make it last call in terms of comments. So Sam Adams and then Ann Homer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna take a quick moment and say, you know, if we all agree that we need child, quality childcare and we have the start of a solution right at our fingertips, a solution that our community is really behind, it would be such a shame to let that slip through our fingers. Um, you know, it's obviously not gonna fix everything, but we have a chance to really get something moving forward and start to address this problem. Um, so I'm in favor of this project. Um, and I just wanna say on a personal note too, um, we talked about, you know, folks trying to find childcare and and about three months ago, I became a foster mom and having to call around and have everybody say it's a two-year waitlist for childcare. It just uh, was a huge shock to me as somebody who hadn't had kids before and is now all of a sudden with a one-year-old and trying to figure out how do I possibly keep my full-time job going while having to care for this child that I have nowhere to send him? For two years. What? How is that acceptable in our modern society? So I am very in favor of getting this moving and as a, you know, not a fix of everything, but getting us started on solving this problem and making sure that folks who wanna be in the workforce and who have children have a, a really good enriching place to send them. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Sam. And uh, Ann Homer.
Thank you, Mayor Tobin and members of the council. I won't repeat what others have said, but I will also ask you to look at this holistically. As many of you know, we at the legislature were struggling with a place for our senior citizens. Long, hard decisions had to be made and we have found a location that's absolutely perfect. We have the same and just as finding a place for our seniors to keep them healthy and enriched and out of nursing homes and on Medicaid. The same thing will happen with the investment in our children. I worked at the county health department. I see the difference that early intervention makes in children, potentially keeping them off Medicaid for the rest of their life because we've been able to intervene. Joanne Wickman, whom many of you know from the CPSC program at the high school, talked about exactly the importance of early intervention. We've got the opportunity to make a difference. We've got the opportunity to give our children and their families what they need. I have a coworker who actually is leaving her job because she has two young children and her entire paycheck is going to childcare when she can find it. We need to stop that trend as well. There's one person that's being lost to the workforce. So I would encourage you to think long and hard. Nothing is ever guaranteed. Someone spoke about having sustainability for five years of funding. We don't know that there's sustain, sustainability of five years for funding for anything. It is always up in the air, whether you're a not-for-profit, whether you're the government, whether you're a private industry. COVID has set us back. We have a chance to help the families move out of this pandemic, and I would encourage you to strongly think of allowing this project to go forth. And I think
And Mayor, I just had a quick comment, Mayor. It won't take long, maybe thirty seconds. I um, I, I want us to, to, you know, I want us to build back better. And, and this is an opportunity to build back better when it comes to childcare. And I think Tom brings up a good point and, and we have some time, we can look at some of those um, figures. Um, but I also, with Ann and, and Bo here, and this may be located in the city, but kids from all over the county are coming in to these childcare uh, or um, built places. And so maybe I would ask, and not maybe Ann and Bo, I would ask that you also ask the county if, if they would help us with some funding on this. You also receive some American Rescue Plan money, and this really is of, it's in the city, but there are kids coming from communities outside the city. So I, I'd ask you to join us in a, in a partnership with the resources we have that, you know, we have the state, we have some other areas, you know, Bob has indicated the businesses that are behind it. I'd like to see the county uh, join with us as well.
We'll carry that message forward.
Thank you. Katie Solomon.
Let us not forget that the goal is for these two childcare entities to own the building to become totally self-sufficient when they no longer need the city to um, to get the grants that they're at for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Katie. And uh, the second part, this will be a little can, can do this briefly, the possible timeline in terms of action. So you know, two thousand and nineteen, we were looking to go forward and as people know, the school district did have a, a vote for this. And as it was stated, it was almost seventy-nine percent of the electorate who voted. And it was a higher turnout than normal because everybody was counted as an absentee ballot. So everybody received the opportunity to vote via mail. And I just gotta say, I don't think I won my last election by seventy-eight percent, and I think I was unopposed. So that's a pretty solid turnout, a pretty solid number. Uh, going forward, we did ask council to accept the recommendations from the Parker School Task Force. And it was the task force recommendation. The full membership uh, was displayed earlier, but there are three people from council, three county legislators, uh, two from the school board, and three members of the task force were neighbors, people that lived in close proximity to Parker. And it was a group that was approved by city council and empowered to go about this. So going forward from here, we put everything on pause as everything was on pause, but that vote last year was during the pandemic. So this was not, and, and yes, things have changed. That vote was during the pandemic while everything was upside down. That was last June. So I think our residents are aware of the topic. They've been engaged in terms of this topic and have spoken quite clearly. And moving forward, uh, the intent here, if we are to move forward at our next couple, hey, hopefully the next meeting, the first meeting in October, and it would be twofold. One would be to ask for approval of the purchase of the building. And the second would be uh, approval to move forward with putting out an RFP for a architect engineer to come up with design plans. And we won't know potential costs until an architect can be hired and the architect can do that. In terms of the school, the building itself, if we are on that timeline, uh, but I believe, and Lindy, correct me if I am wrong, but you do have uh, with minimal work, the opportunity to occupy classrooms pretty much as soon as you uh, have access to doing that work, paint and some other things. And so the timeline right now would be looking for September of twenty-two, next fall. And there's classrooms that could be occupied with minimal work. There's some rooms that need more work, i.e. outside doors, additional bathrooms um, for the younger participants. But the goal here would be September of next year. And we have a potential timeline that would get us to that. And we would see activity and we would see a lot of growth that I believe in the community. The other point to remember, the district has held off in terms of moving forward, looking or investigating other options. And if we were to push this off for another six months, another year, there still is a cost of maintenance for that structure. Yes, that is being borne by the school district. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I pay City of Portland School District taxes. So regardless if the district owns it or if the city owns it, there are city taxpayers that are helping to maintain the building as is. So council, if there's other thoughts, other discussion, but uh, looking to have a, have an official public hearing at the first meeting in October and then ask council for action.
Yes, please. Yes, go forward.
Long discussion, but very salient. And we can move on to agenda item number two, resolution approve a special event application along with all other required permits for the Cortland Reproductive Choice on October second of two thousand and twenty-one from twelve-thirty PM to two PM on Main Street and corners of Clinton Avenue and Bratton Avenue. We have motion to consider. Council looking for a motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. And I thought I may have seen Andrea Rankin. I could be mistaken. Council, any questions? Or discussion?
Worthy event. Thank you for putting this together, Andrea, wherever you are.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Carries. Katie, I agree. Number three, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with direct energy for supply of natural gas for twelve months, and this is contingent upon review by Corporation Council, C O U N S E L. Supply covers all City of Cortland accounts. Motion to consider. Bruce Titler, second. Katie Solomon, discussion. Bruce Adams, I think this is pretty straightforward, but he's been helping out with this.
Uh, yeah, as I uh, mentioned in my letter, uh, there is definitely the possibility of some uh, even worse price spikes over the winter. Uh, I figure we lock this price in for a year and hope that uh, prices normalize by the time it's uh, uh, the end of the, the year period and then uh, lock in a lower price for a longer period of time. Uh, this is about fifty percent higher than the price we're currently paying. Uh, MAC has already accounted for that increase uh, in general fund budget lines, and I have uh, adjusted for it in my budget. It is what it is. Uh, for some reason, supplies are low and uh, demand has been high.
Very good. Further discussion? Any questions? Tom Michaels.
Yes, I was looking at your graph, Bruce, and you're asking us to lock in at the highest price that we've seen in years.
Yes, and again, uh, you know, uh, what was explained to me is that uh, if supplies stay low and we have a harsh winter, uh, that price could go up half again. Uh, yes, this is the, this is the highest price we've seen. Uh, it's the highest price we've seen. Um, but it, it could certainly get worse.
Is there any, uh, can we get, can we get locked in in less, in less than uh, one year increments?
Uh, no, they offer one-year, two-year and three-year contracts.
Okay. Will they give us a break if it goes down?
Alas, no.
I already knew that answer. All right, thank you.
Good. Council, further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carries. And number four, local law to amend the charter by adding a three-way stop sign at the intersection of the uh, Portland Enlarge School District High School entry and Valley View Drive. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. Sam Adams, discussion. Putting up stop signs, regulating traffic.
Makes a lot of sense to me as, you know, my, when my kids were up there, especially when you have a lot of team drivers. The more stop signs, the better.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carries. Number five, consideration of a local law to expand the police commission from three to five members. Motion to consider. Uh, Bruce Titler, second. Katie Solomon, discussion.
This, just to remind people, this came out of the governor's EO two oh three uh, request for reforms and that we put together with uh, Chief Catalano and Chief Sandy. Um, so that, that's where this came from. It's right from that. And and all those reforms, by the way, um, Chief Sandy, you can speak if you want to, but uh, nothing was in there that Chief Catalano and Chief Sandy didn't think uh, wasn't workable. So, you know, that, it was a real good team effort on these reforms. This was
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. And carries. Number six, resolution to lift the hiring freeze for the city police department to fill a vacancy created by a crossing guard who is planning to retire on September twenty-fourth. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Number seven, resolu- Yes, resolution from the city police department to hire a substitute crossing guard to replace the substitute crossing guard who will now fill a full-time vacancy created by the aforementioned retirement. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carries. Number eight, resolution to transfer ninety-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars from the general fund contingency account to account A sixteen eighty-five four zero five zero zero data processing equipment to fund the replacement of the city's uh, IT infrastructure. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Sam Adams, discussion.
Is uh, is Dave still here?
Yeah, I'm on.
Yeah, Dave, can you just, just speak to this briefly a little bit?
Yeah, this is our, our core infrastructure. It's all the, it's the hardware that we run all our, the city servers on. So it's basically all the computing power. It's coming to a seven-year end of life at the end of the year. Uh, we started looking at financing it uh, at the, at last year's budget when we were working on this year's budget and MAC moved it into contingency. We tried, we applied for two different grants. We got turned down, so um, we're gonna end up having to go with a contingency. And we're running out of time because equipment is getting near impossible to get anymore. It's taken months to get it, to get uh, any equipment. So we need to get this ordered.
All right, thank you.
Clarif- oh, Tom Michaels.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, just a couple of things, Dave. Uh, how come, uh, how come we're not gonna run with uh, Windows uh, twenty twenty-two? That would get more, more life out of uh, what we have if we ran with uh, what you currently propose.
No, this, this is the, this is the servers. This is the V, this is the infrastructure that runs all the servers. So all the servers run inside this. So it's, it's what they call, it, it's the, it's called VMware. It, it's a, it's basically a big server which runs all the twenty servers that we have, which are, those are Windows servers inside there. So those we, we update as needed. But it's, it's not actually just a Windows server we're replacing. It's kind of, it's really more hardware than anything.
All right, that's, yep. Now the software side, it's the hardware side.
Right, correct, correct.
Now, will Dell be supporting this with their own tech, or are we gonna be outsourcing this to someone else?
Oh, no, no, that's part of it. It comes with a, we're gonna buy five-year onsite repair. Um, something like this, we have to buy the uh, for our response, cuz if there is a problem and um, we need to get them here. and um, we need to get them here, because it's it it basically runs everything that we do.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Point of information, we have had, counsel, we have had some discussion in terms of rescue plan funds and the request has been to spend or my recommendation is to spend this and then replenish contingency from rescue plan funds. That was an intention to use rescue plans for this, but until we have approval, we cannot do that. Um, so no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carries. Hey, gonna be able to keep using my computer. Number nine, resolution, resolution to cancel loan agreement with the Portland Rural Cemetery Incorporated and forego collection of all advances and accrued interest made thereon. Uh, there's some rearizes. I'll ask for a motion to consider. John Bennett. Second, Jackie Chapman. Discussion. Uh, there was an 8,000 is was discussed at our last council meeting. There was an $8,000 loan from the city to the cemetery. Um, and cemeteries are in a unique situation where uh, the relationship between a municipality and cemetery allows some things such as this that are not uh, necessarily possible for other entities. But the goal has been and will continue to be, I think, to support our board, our local board members for the cemetery and keeping the cemetery up to snout. And there is a group called Forest Loan that is interested in purchasing Portland Rural and now some others. And this group, I believe, is based out of Buffalo area. So there is a letter in the packet where they're asking counsel to consider this. I did go back and ask if uh, they were willing to pay and this letter is the response, so I take it as a their preferences. Counsel, please write off the $8,000 loan. John Bennett.
Wow. I was one of the ones between myself, Mac and Brian that took this on back now. I've got five years ago, four years ago, I can't remember. Yes, I would like to get the money back, but I have to balance that out by saying if the loan we gave them helped them survive and take this partnership, which the state has finally approved, um, then that's a cost I'm willing unfortunately to to bear. Also knowing as a safe again, that time period back, what Chris and Nick said it would cost the city to have to maintain the cemetery. Um, again, too, I I don't like foregoing any loan. But in this case, I think it saved the city money and I think it gave the cemetery time to have this developed, land developed and get it before the state attorney general's office to get it approved. Which again is what had to happen. The state attorney general's office had to approve it and which they did, so. Um, that's just my opinion.
Katie Siliman.
So forgive me, and I don't want you to have to rehash what you discussed last meeting when I wasn't with you. But didn't, doesn't the cemetery come with a trust that they will be able to access?
The trust, Katie, is strictly for when the life of the cemetery is ended as far as being a active cemetery. The trust is strictly there to maintain the cemetery after the life of the cemetery is ended.
Okay. My other, my other comment, um, Mayor, is you and I talked about possibly making it a contingency that the gate at the top of the hill we left open during daylight hours before we write off this loan. I would like to get something for the loan. And there are plenty of people who would like to take a walk in the cemetery and the university's put a lot of effort into tagging the trees and making it um, giving it an arboretum type feel. So it's really lovely to walk around, but people don't wanna have to go all the way down and park and then walk up, so. Um, I think that those gates should be unlocked during the daytime so that people can use it, understand why they'd be concerned about potential vandalism if they leave them open all night long, because it's just too accessible. But I think it should be accessible during the daytime for walkers.
I think that's a good point, Katie, during the daytime. I don't know why we can't have it open during the day. I I there may be some issues in terms of who's gonna unlock it, unlock it every day. But I don't see why it couldn't be open during the day, during daylight hours. I I think that's a good point.
Katie, you're talking about at the top of the hill?
Yes.
No, okay. Yeah, I can't comment because that access it on Tompkins Street. So I started by having to walk up the cemetery hill.
I can certainly bring that forward and Katie, will that influence your final vote on the matter or can we make it a strong recommendation?
We could make it a strong recommendation if you think they won't just blow it off.
No, I think John Herschel might be open to that.
So I'll bring that forward with uh, so if if this receives approval, I will bring that forward.
Okay, thank you.
Troy Backwith.
I guess a question for Rick on that. I mean, we could say anything we wanted to do, but that's once we close the deal with them or you guys decide to write off the loan. If there's no legal or any documentation, then I mean, you're just proving a moot point here, Katie.
You look, you do lose your leverage uh, by agreeing to this without having your conditions met, but you know, that's that is up to the council. But yes, Troy, you're absolutely right.
Why I ask, is this a uh, do or die issue for Katie?
It kind of is. Do you think it would be wrote on this next time and you could have that conversation with them?
Well, we did table it today, correct?
Correct.
We're allowed to table one more time?
Three, two times.
Troy all over it. That's impressive. Counsel, what's your, what's your brothers?
I think Katie's got a point, but if we don't get anything in writing and something in the sale or the the transfer, it's just, it's gonna get forgotten. It's never gonna be open. So I mean, if that's what she wants to do, I'll I'll support that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I support what Katie's saying. So try to, do I interpret that as a motion to table?
Yes, I think that's probably that. I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion to table by uh, council member Titler and then second by council member Sil- Siliman. Uh, all in favor of tabling to the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries.
Mayor, if you'd like for me to talk to John Herschel, I can do that.
Uh, might be helpful. I will speak with him as well, or if you want to, I'm more than happy to let you take the lead on that.
Okay.
Katie?
Yes.
Uh, maybe bring it up to John that by possibly opening it up more for walkers, that it might increase the chance of maybe more volunteers there to help them. The more that get in there and and see the beauty of it, which is I don't know, kind of morbid when one thing's walking through a cemetery is beauty, but I I, when I walk through there, I look at dates 100 years old and I wonder about that person, things like that. So maybe the more people that walk through there might possibly produce more volunteers to help take care of it.
Or even more sales. You know, I learned that rural cemeteries were um, became a thing after after one in Boston in Cambridge. It's very beautiful. It has paths, it has um, beautiful stonework and it's uh, it's a charming place just to walk through and spend an afternoon as as crazy as that may sound to some people. And it was a big switch away from burial grounds and churchyards, which tended to be less or um, ornate and attractive. So you know, I always wondered, why is it called the rural cemetery when it's just a stone's throw out of the center of town? But that's why, because rural cemeteries were meant to be places where people strolled and people enjoyed the afternoon and said hello to their neighbors who were also strolling. So it's not as crazy as it sounds to go strolling through a cemetery.
Actually, Katie, when it was created, it really was a rural cemetery. Okay, Tompkins Street, it it really the city of Corlin, I don't think was reaching the cemetery lines yet as far as growth, so.
Things John back to his younger days.
Yeah.
Actually, where Courthouse Park is right now was uh, was the first cemetery in Corlin.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, that site had moved to what is a rural cemetery today, uh, for a brief history lesson for those that didn't know that.
Further, further discussion? Okay. Need a reminder, did we did take a vote, correct?
Yes.
Alright, that's how I remembered it. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Uh, number 10. An opportunity consideration of resolution to adopt funding priorities for the American Rescue Plan Funds. And we can entertain a motion to consider. Bruce Titler. Second, Troy Backwith, discussion. Now, uh, counsel and for the public, basically what we have done for the city is we looked at where we had some significant gaps based upon uh, the past year and a half with everything that hit with COVID. And I did mention earlier, one of the things to potentially be supported uh, computer servers, accessories, and then there's other high priorities in terms of the city. Um, counsel, I understand there's been some individual conversations and there's been some small group conversations. I've tried to collect different thoughts and put it all in one document. Uh, I'll open up the floor. Just go ahead and tell me where we are. Go ahead, Tom Michaels. And Tom, I'm I'm gonna apologize because you did have a recommendation that, but I'll let you go. I'm I apologize for not including it.
Yeah, a while back I was bending the mayor's ear on uh, Randall, Randall Park and the fact that uh, it's in dire needs of renovating. And uh, to get this project off the ground, we need uh, some seed money to uh, have a park developer come up with a plan to best best utilize the space that we currently have. Uh, and making the the needed changes. And uh, some of this would require seed money uh, uh, for a park uh, planning uh, company. And I've been in contact with uh, John and Andrea at uh, the youth bureau and uh, we've been working for a couple of months now, uh, trying to put something together.
Okay, so Tom, I I worked on the assumption though that uh, this is separate from one of the recommendations because there is a recommendation for investment of $125,000 into parks. So I'm assuming this is in addition to.
Uh, then I'm not sure where 125 came from. But it could be very well in addition to.
Tom, you're talking about, and I've talked to John about it too, um, like adding, was it one or two pickleball courts down there at Randall?
Oh yeah, there's uh, there's other things that uh, we've uh, we've talked about. Uh, some kind of a water park, uh, similar to, what's it, Sucket? Uh, I've also reached out to uh, Claudia Tenney's office. I met with one of her representatives in Norwich here uh, about about two months ago uh, for uh, to pick uh, to pick his brain for funding sources. And I I passed those on uh, John's office. So right now, uh, we're still in the early stages, but uh, we're all ready to move forward with uh, with something here.
Yeah, you know, when I, and again, I talked to John about that a little bit. Um, the splash pad at Sucket is such a success that I'm thinking a splash pad on the other side of the city, like at Randall might help balance things out. It's it's a joy to see, I've taken my seven-year-old grandma, yeah, seven-year-old granddaughter, she turned seven in June, Johnny. I took my seven-year-old granddaughter to the pool and to the splash pad two to three times this past summer. Um, and the kids love the splash pad. Um, I'll tell you what, Tom, I'd support that. While I'd like to bring up that I do think city employees that were not furloughed are entitled to a little something. I don't have an amount and I don't think it needs to be a great amount. But the city employees that were furloughed, that were not furloughed, who were there day in and day out, I think would really appreciate the thought of getting a little something. Again, I don't think it needs much. Um, and I think all we need to do is maybe rearrange some of the money, even if, even though the nonprofits can use it. Um, I think maybe we can rearrange some money from the nonprofits to our city employees who did risk day in and day out. Um, and there's one group of city employees who really risked it and again, too, I I can't say anything publicly, but they're very insulted about something else that's going on, but yet they go in every day and do their job knowing that they're at the bottom of the payroll scale. So I have no problem supporting you, Tom, um, on that. Do a little horse trading here if you're willing to support some money to our our employees. And again, too, I'd leave that up then to others to determine the amount.
So in the interest, in the interest of time and to keep us moving along, um, I'm gonna make a suggestion. I have broken this basically into three groups.
We have till midnight.
I've broken this into three groups. In the first group, I termed, I termed it community outreach and support. And without getting into details for the general public's, in the interest of time again, for the general public's information, there's about $255,000 uh, that has been set aside there. And then there's community projects that are listed. There's four different items. That includes uh, items for our parks, sidewalks, um, potential for pickleball court landing and then potential for funding for community events. Uh, that would help bring community together. And that total, if my math is correct, is $285,000. City employee compensation, um, I think what John's touching upon, there's two things that have been put in there and it's a total of $80,000. One is uh, the opportunity for mental health checks, because we talk about the importance not just in the city, but in society of mental health, mental wellness. But I say, let's put our money where our mouth is and that would be approximately $40,000 so that we're encouraging uh, employees and staff to seek a wellness visit if applicable. And we also have department heads who did not receive a pay increase, who are still in the same position that they were last year. And they did that because we knew it was gonna be a tight budget. And then with the rescue plan and everything else, I appreciate their sacrifice. And full disclosure, I've put myself in there as well because um, I think I announced it last year, but I cut my salary from 25 to 20,000 last year. I took a reduction. And since we are whole, my ask would be to make people that did not take a salary did not take a salary increase that otherwise would have, that they are compensated. And then myself, back to where it was budgeted and expected. And then number three was support for services for city functions. And there's 13 different items in that group. And again, if my math is correct, $852,000. And that leaves us $1,472,000, which still gives over $500,000 that can be determined for my recommendation of future mayor and council. So Tom Michaels, the 35 for the Randall Park. Getting into that, would that be separate? I'll say yes.
Yeah, it might not even come to that. No, that's just a number I shot out based on some of the other projects we've been involved with over the years.
How about this? If we make it 28, then that puts it at 1.5 million exactly.
What if we're short?
Oh boy, you're going to be around next year. I will not. You're going to be involved.
Yeah.
Tom, I'm not sure. What did you want to use that money for Randall? Was it for a splash pad that John talked about or just general improvements or what were you looking for?
Hire a firm to come up with a plan as to best utilize the renovation to that.
Oh, just to create a plan for the better use of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Bruce and Ward Eight. Actually, is all of that in yours or some of that in Ward Five, Tom?
Bill took an interest because some of it does border his ward.
Okay. As somebody who, before knee replacement and vertebrae problems, so somebody used to play tennis lot, Meldrum was a gem. Yes, tennis play at Meldrum dropped significantly once the college redid all of their courts. And then there was just never money over the years to redo the tennis courts there. And even the fencing, John did get new fencing two to three years ago. But at one time, as Tom and Bill talked to John, and Tom would have a better idea, I think John mentioned to redo all four courts there would be well over $100,000. Since then, pickleball has taken the nation by storm, which it's off the point. Where the hell did they come up with a name like pickleball? But it's taken the nation by storm. And other than, I think maybe Corlinville is going to do some pickleball courts. I could see a couple pickleball courts is a great enhancement for down there at Randall. Again, what the cost would be, John McNerney might have a ballpark number. I don't. But it would be good to have the Randall Park area revitalized. As somebody who, again, sponsored a men's softball team for 10 years and played there at the Randall Ballpark from 1982 until 1992. And paid sponsored money to the youth bureau. Our ballfields were a great, great attraction, taken care of. And then other days I'd be playing tennis there. It has fallen in disarray. And we've done many wonderful, great things to all the other parks. So I think Tom's right. I think it's time for Randall to get some attention.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Mayor, I do have a few things to say though, when you get a chance and people are done.
Bruce, you're up.
Okay. I can't say I'm against any of the ideas you came up with, Mayor. The need is so great. I don't think any of them are bad ideas. I think they're all good ideas. I think allocating the money that you did, it makes a lot of sense. But I do want to, I think this is an opportunity for us to build back better. And I'd like to create a Build Back Better Home Repair Program. And my idea is if we fund it at $100,000 at 1% interest. And I would start, obviously, you know, there's a lot more we can go into this. I would start by saying it'd be exterior repairs and we would cap it and say, nobody could, and be a loan. So we have $100,000 and people could borrow up to $5,000. And they'd have to pay it back within five years. I would open it up, it wouldn't just be low and moderate income. We would open up to much broader sphere of people. And if we funded 100,000 this year, actually for 2022, and then we take next year's money and we fund it for 2023, that gives us two years to figure out how to fund it for three more years. And once we've done that, it's a self-sustaining revolving loan program. And even if the first year, you know, 20 people borrowed, if the first five years we did this and 20 people borrowed, you know, the 5,000, you're talking about 100 homes being seriously impacted using this federal money. I found 95,000. I sent this to folks, but it was late in the game, so they may not have a chance to see it. I pulled a little bit of money off some of the projects you had proposed, Mayor. And I was able to come up with $95,000 to do this. So I would like us to consider using 100,000 of this money for next year, 100,000 of it next year, to create this revolving loan, Build Back Better Home Repair Program and give folks a chance. Because a lot of people aren't eligible for the low to moderate income, but still coming up with several thousand dollars for a home repair, job, painting, roof, porch, whatever, is still a lot of money. And this is a way that we can help that. So if you think about it, if everybody matches, you know, if they borrow 5,000 and they put in 5,000, you're talking about $200,000 a year over five years, that's a million dollars worth of home improvements. That would make a big impact on this community in addition to the Build Back Better Sidewalk programs that we have all agreed we need to allocate money for. So I'm telling that out there and I didn't eliminate any of your ideas, Mayor. I did just take a few from here and a few from there to try to come up with that 95,000. So I'm still a little bit short, but I think I know where I can find that. So that's what I would like to see us do. And I have more details of people. And I ran this by Mac Cook. He thought it sounded like a good program. I ran it by Rich Cunningham. He thought it made sense. So, you know, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just something that, okay, where's the flaw in this? Most people would repay this loan. Some people might not, but I believe most people would because by me borrowing this money and repaying it, it lets my neighbor do some work and then, and so on. And one of the things I kicked around a little bit is maybe we even give a preference. If two or more homes in the same block want to do it, maybe they get a preference. And then you start a real kind of domino effect by attracting, you know, two or three places on the same street. And this is a once, and I believe once in a, I don't know, it might not be once in a lifetime, but I don't think we're ever going to see this kind of money again with so few streams attached that we can create a program like this. So that's what I would like to do. And if that means we need to put off voting on this tonight, give people more time to think about it, I'm okay with that. You know, we don't have to do this quickly. I want to make sure we do it correctly. And I like your idea of money to these organizations, but I'd like to be able to put some money back in the people's pockets right here in the community to do some home repairs. So my thought.
Well, Bruce? I think Katie can speak to you. We did have that program. Katie would know the amount and it was successful the first year and then it, yeah, kind of eased off. Now, sometimes some of those things happen, rather not if it's because the word wasn't out there. Sometimes it's awful hard for municipalities to promote things with as much as we'd like to promote.
Yeah, I heard about that program and I talked to Rich Cunningham about it and Mac had remembered some of it too. And that was for moderate income. And, you know, this would be beyond that.
Yeah.
Right. It was called the Middle Income Home Repair Program. For the same reasons you stated, Bruce, that there's a lot of program, there's a lot of money available for low income, but not much made available for middle income, which is still pretty modest income when we come to think about it. I like that this is, I like your program. I totally support it. I like that it's a a new iteration of our older idea. I like that you have a timeframe for the end of paying back the loan. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think that our program would have, with these sorts of programs, what they need is time to get out there and for people to notice them and ask about them and get the word from each other. And so ours ran for two years. And if we could get this going and re-reading its money, then I think more people would learn about it and take advantage of it. That's the hope. And I know Roy Everett talked to me about how we really need to think of some ways to help people who want to fix up their places. Because there are a lot of people hurting out there. So I like that your plan isn't limited to, you know, one income or another. It's just available to everyone.
And I would say I would limit it to one or two family owner occupied homes only. That would be the other caveat I probably didn't explain. So that's the other part of it that I would want us to instill.
I'd like to suggest that maybe we table this resolution for two weeks so we can discuss more.
Okay.
Okay.
So there is a suggestion, but before somebody makes the motion, before somebody makes the motion to table, is there any further discussion this night, tonight? John, I think that's a great recommendation, but is there anything else that people would like to discuss before there's a motion on the floor to table? Because once it's on, then we're going to need to vote on that motion. Tom Michaels?
Yeah, the other item that the mayor and I discussed was loaves and fishes. During the pandemic, they kept their kitchen going every day, feeding people that were in dire need of a hot meal. And I also want to see some money sent their way.
Not to make light of things, Tom, but the longer this meeting goes, the later at night I'm standing out on my deck grilling my fish.
I'll be over.
I'm an hour away. So Tom, I think that's one more thing we talk about in the next couple of weeks after we table this.
Yeah, I just don't want to turn into another discussion in two weeks. Let's try to get together before then and hash yourself.
Okay.
People are more than welcome to come on up to my camp and.
All right, John. We're going to stay on point here. If there's no further discussion.
Make a motion, we table this?
There is a motion to table. Does it have support?
Second.
So a motion by Bruce Tyler, second by Jackie Chapman. All those in favor of tabling until our first meeting in October, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie, 7-0. Thank you. Item number 11, discussion and opportunity to set a date for a public hearing regarding the rezoning of a piece of property on River Street. The reason why this is not numbered is the property does not have a number. So full disclosure for the general public, this property is essentially landlocked. It is off of River Street. And for those who are aware, this would potentially be one of three parcels that would be for the potential new burn dairy, gas and grocery. So discussion, we're looking to set a date of the public hearing at our next council meeting. Council meets with approval?
Yes.
Mayor, I saw Rick's hand up. No, I was going to make that recommendation that we do it for October 4th. The local law itself is relatively straightforward. October 5th. October 5th.
Okay.
Yes, the 5th is the next meeting. And this would be a second public hearing, Parker School being the other. So we would have two public hearings at our next meeting. Any further discussion about this? Troy Beckwith?
I think we better be careful what we're doing here. A couple of things I got here. You got to remember the recommendation from the county that makes sure the city clearly considers the change of zoning for the existing parcel, which is a B2. Ensure the zoning changes in conformance in concert with the recommendation, the comprehensive plan from the city.
Are you quoting the recommendation from the county planners or the planning board?
Planning board. And also, you know, we got to be careful about spat zoning. Also, in the New York zoning law, there was a lawsuit which was determine whether the zoning amendment can continue spat zoning. The courts will examine the purpose of the change in relative benefit to the owner or to the public. If the court finds the amendment was adapted solely for the benefit of the landowner, the measure will be disapproved. So we got to be careful what we're doing here. And this goes on and on and on. I can email this guy to you.
Yeah, send it to me, please. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing the right way.
Troy, email it to everybody, please.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
And I got all kinds of documentations here that, you know, I think this should be looked at quite clearly. And you also got to remember, we're under no time restraints to do this, so.
Okay, so we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Actually, I have a definition of spat zoning in front of me. I was going to mention it tonight if Troy didn't. We have to be very careful regarding spat zoning. And this, reading this definition, it looks like it clearly falls within that definition regarding that parcel.
Very good. Well, we're just talking about the public hearing for the next meeting. Not going to be asking council to vote unless council desires to put it up for a vote. Pass along the information and we will lean upon Corporation Counsel, Rick Van Donzel, for a legal interpretation for the city. Any further discussion? Number 13. You have the opportunity to collaborate with the county planner to determine new ward boundaries based upon the recently completed 2020 census. This can include changing boundaries or potentially changing the number of council seats. Council? Thoughts? Tom Michaels?
This seems to come up every time there's a census that was performed. The founding fathers way back when came up with eight wards because they wanted constituents clearly represented by an individual. And the need of having eight wards instead of seven or six gave more room for an individual to be in more close contact with his or her ward. So that there is fair representation.
Very good. Bruce, let me just get clarification. So Tom, your preference would be to keep it at eight?
Yes.
Okay. Thought that's where you were going, but I just wanted to make sure. And then Bruce?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with working with the county planner. We may have to change some boundaries or something around, make sure everything is, you know, the one person, one vote rule is in play. But I'm with Tom. I'm not looking going into this to reduce the number of counselors. I don't know what the population of the city was back when it was founded 100 years ago. But if they thought eight was uh, needed then, I don't know why we'd wanna change that, you know. I, I'm not looking to change it either. And I, I like the fact that people are represented um by eight different people. I, I like it. I like the wards, the way that they are, but we may have to change some of the boundaries, Tom, based on populations. That's all.
No, that, and that's happened before, Bruce, where we've changed boundaries.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would have to think a hundred years ago, the population was a tad bit less than currently. And again, Bruce, city founders thought then, as both Tom and you, Bruce, have said, thought that eight was enough. Um, then it's not up to me to disagree with them. Um, again, in all honesty, the fourth ward in comparison to some of the others relatively is, is the smallest, but on the other hand, it does encompass numerous Sunni dorms now. Do those kids partake recently in elections? Not necessarily, but I can remember back 25, 30, 35 years ago that there was a heavy turnout in students in city elections. So again, too, while my ward is small currently, as far as who actually votes, there's always the possibility that it could double and triple in number at any time. So to do away or to compromise and, and combine it into another ward is doing just the opposite of what you said, Bruce. It's, it's weak, weakening uh, rep- representation. So I'm not in favor of uh reducing the number on council.
Is there anybody who would like to, let me make it this way. Is there anybody who would like to see a different number? Than eight, other than eight? Very good. So at this point, the uh, desire of council is to see a redistribution of the ward boundaries that we are in compliance. Making sure that each ward is equally, um, well, all citizens are equally represented in terms of the number of constituents that each council member represents. Very good. And we can have further discussion with county planner if desired. Number 14, discussion on the SPCA contract. Mr. Van Donzel.
Uh, yes, they had a new contract for the 2022 year. Uh, and they're asking for a slight increase of approximately 5%, which is about uh, $3,000, maybe $4,000. That takes into account uh, some of the extra duties they're now doing relative to the uh, harboring of uh, more dogs than the code allows. We haven't had really the in-house staff to take care of that. And so now we have, and we have been having successful prosecutions and have sort of been able to deal with the uh, trying to work that out for homeowners and uh, um, you know, more dogs or cats than we have. So I think it's something good to consider.
So this will be coming forward and it will be put forward during the budget process, correct? So no assets at this point.
Board with it. I think that was the idea to hear from people.
I'm in favor, yeah.
That's one. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm sure their expenses is going up more than 5% actually, so I'm okay with it.
Uh, they, they may be part of the uh, the new, the new exotic pet commission. Uh, I plan on resigning that by the end of the year.
Oh!
My wife, every time I mention chicken, uh, she thinks we're barbecuing them.
All right, thank you. Number 15. Discussion regarding the city's trash collection program. The current track, contract expires December this year. Uh, council, we, we need to provide some guidance. I've spoken with Mr. Dovi about the potential for putting out an RFP. Um, do we want to, the, the big question will be, do we want to continue trash collection how it's currently structured? Or do we want to do something different? As a reminder, the glass collection being separate is, I would just use the word problematic.
I think, I think now people are starting to get used to the, the, the current program, even though it's been in place a couple of years now. I hate to change it on them again.
What are the options? This is sorry, this is the cheapest option still, isn't it?
Um, ma- matter of perspective, I think. I agree with you philosophically. I think the blue bag program has done what a municipality should, and that's providing what I would call the lowest possible expense based upon what is generated. If we were to go to a, another system where uh, you would have either tiers or a set price, then larger households or homes would essentially pay the same or again, you'd have larger homes paying the same as somebody who might be less of a user. So it would change uh, change the cost for people that are more frugal, people that are not creating as much trash. And quite frankly, what do you do? How would you structure it? To encourage people to decrease their trash and to increase their recycling. So you go around, you see the containers that can be lifted up by the vehicle dumped in. I've been told that there is an opportunity where you could have different sizes. So you could have a full-size bin. And apparently they make an insert so you could have a smaller amount. Well, that would give you two prices. Can we uh, not give you the flexibility that our current system allows?
Could, hey, Mary, can we have Nick just spend a couple, I know, I know it's late. We got a lot of items left, so I don't wanna, you know, spend 30 minutes on this, but can we hear Nick maybe weigh in just briefly on this topic?
Yeah, sure. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, thi- this is, you know, trash collection i- is, is not an easy project. Uh, it's got a lot of moving parts. Uh, we don't have a lot of time uh, before the end of this contract uh, to fully flesh out what our program should be moving forward. Um, we're, we're talking about, you know, later on this agenda dumpsters. Uh, I, I think we should be looking at recycling and garbage uh, as a whole. And, and devise a, a plan that financially and environmentally works for the city of Cortland. Um, I, I have, do have some ideas. Um, I, I know in the contract or the current agreement with Bert Adams, um, there, there is a possibility of an extension of the current contract. Um, I almost would lean towards something like that so that we can really devise a plan of, if we're gonna go away from blue bags, um, you know, wh- what does that look like? Does it look like, uh, you know, toders that are, you know, possibly $75 to $100 each? There's 5,000 stops in the city of Cortland. Who pays for that? There, there, there's a lot of moving parts to this, as I said. Uh, if, if we wanted to be a good program across the board, I think we need to spend some time and really, really do a deep dive in research, what other communities do, what's available. Uh, you know, what our options are basically. Um, another thing with, with putting something together, you know, not in haste, but at the end of this year is, I know that there is a big disparity from the bids in 2018 uh, between the vendor that we currently have uh, and the next bidder. And I think that if we do put something out, um, you know, RFP is probably the way to go. Uh, but if we do that now, I think that you're, they're gonna try to recoup those, that cost differential between what they bid and what they left on the table uh, a couple of years ago. I think you're, you're gonna see, instead of a, a slight cost of living increase, I think you're gonna see a substantial increase in garbage.
I know you're not gonna disagree with you on that, Nick.
Um, I, I believe we uh, I think we generate.
Contract did go up significantly from the previous contract.
Yes, I think so.
It does.
Yep.
It went up significantly.
I- in the next bidder was, I believe about $100,000 a year above the one that we selected. Based on average tonnage. Of about 1,700 tons a year. Right, it's, it's definitely up to, up to you guys. Um, I just, I, I think, as I said, if you were to go to toders, go away from blue bags, um, I'm not saying that's a bad direction to move in. I just think that uh, the decisions need to be quality and based on, you know, environmental and financial data. Um, and probably the results from other communities.
Rick had his hand up too.
Uh, the, the contract does allow for an extension, uh, but it's a mutual extension. And that requires a mutual agreement and renegotiation with Bert Adams. Uh, so it's not an extension that will simply in prices into the next year. He will undoubtedly negotiate for a higher price and that we need to keep in mind. And again, talking about leverage, uh, we're, we're into October already and they'll have an RFP together and so the negotiation will be very difficult uh, relative to that. But I think I agree with Nick that it needs to be have a comprehensive solution. Uh, and it may be worth, uh, you know, having to pay a little bit more for 2022 to get the program right. So yeah, I, I warn you, but I agree with Nick.
Rick, no, you're correct. It would be expected that uh, Bert would want an increase for an extension. Um, what it would come down to is, would his increase outweigh or, you know, be less than what we would be coming in with an RFP? Um, even if it was similar to what an RFP might bring us, if the extension is the, would the extension be just a one-year extension?
I, I would say that's up to you guys, yeah.
Well, it's up to mutual agreement. You can have two extensions of no more than three years pursuant to this contract. So you can do one 18 months, one three months, one three-year rather. Um, it's what we can agree to with Bert Adams.
Why, if somebody, somebody did mention, I don't know if it was Katie or somebody else, right now, after the rough start with the glass, things seem to be going very good with it. Um, and Bert Adams is uh, I don't, I've not received any complaints in quite a long time from uh, Bert's, about Bert's crew. Um,
We, we get complaints, John. Uh, you know, it, to me, if you look at that, there's 5,000 stops weekly. I, I would say that our complaints are well less than 1%. You're always gonna have a few missed stops or complaints. We do feel those. Um, i- in my opinion, uh, I, I got a couple bullet points here that I prepared and it's just, we want a comprehensive program. There's a lot of moving parts. Uh, recently, as you stated, the, the gla- the changes in glass collection and recycling, people are just getting accustomed to that. The disparity between the bids from 2018 worries me. Uh, the contract does allow it, uh, the, the current agreement. Um, and just the timeframe to get this right is, is, is approaching fast.
So my question is, Nick, would you be doing the research?
Uh, yes, I, I could definitely assist or take lead on that.
And how long do you think it would take to amass what you want, what you are imagining pulling together?
Sure. Um, I, it, it'd probably take a while just because the costs of items right now are so up and down.
Right.
That, it, you know, um, to, to come, come through with something that we think, you know, doesn't have the, the uh, it has more of the convenience uh, away from what the blue bags offer to still offer something that is feasible and easy to use, cost-effective. It, it's not impossible. Um, I just think it's gonna take a, a little bit of time. Um, I don't know. I would definitely say I'd probably uh, wanna spend a couple of months on it, maybe visit the, um, you know, uh, recycling center in Ithaca and see uh, uh, you know, a couple other municipal entities and how they handle uh, their waste.
Okay, so then in that case, I would be in favor of extending this contract until we have the kind of information we want to weigh whether we change anything.
I, I think Brian's right. Is, is typically, an RFP is the way to go on these things. But if you really, really wanna get it right, instead of right now, I think it, it deserves a little bit of time and attention.
Yeah. I'd like to say that this should have come before or sooner, Nick. I'm not placing this on you, not placing it on Rick. Because in all honesty, if council was even paying attention, which again, it's awful hard to know when contracts end. But yeah, we all voted on a contract that's ending this year. So.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. I'm gonna wrap up this conversation because I am gonna remind council that I did bring this up earlier this year. And I asked for input. And I did bring this up internally, so we are not being surprised by this. This is a lack of action. So let's move on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
If I could, Jane, I had my hand up for a little while. One, one thing I wanted to add.
Sorry, Sam, go ahead.
No, it's okay. Um, so I just wanted to add, I do agree that I think being strategic about this would be really important. I've heard um, sort of annexed early through some of the neighbors, folks who are lower income are having a really hard time with their trash in the blue bags. Just wanna make sure we're including that in our considerations of how we move forward. That's all.
Thank you, Sam.
Well, one thing, one thing about this blue bag program, it uh, as this was mentioned earlier, it just doesn't fall on a, a select group of uh, people. It, it falls upon anybody that uh, uh, puts trash out to the curb. So regarding your, whether you're a taxpayer or not a taxpayer, or whether you're low income or high income, everybody has trash and they, and they need to have it taken care of. And the blue bag program to date is pretty much the most fairest program. And that's why it's been, well, I, I don't wanna say successful, but that's, that's why it's been around for as long as it has.
And I hear that, and I've just, I've heard from neighbors, you know, throughout the city, not just in Ward 1, who, you know, if you're trying to debate between, you know, money for a lot of food and money for a blue bag, it's that, that comes up where people are really struggling. So I just wanna make sure that we include those ideas when we're looking at where we're going.
Number 16. Dumpster corral on the Grotton Avenue Orchard Lot. And what canon should be done? So another topic that, this is not the first time coming before council, the corral is not being maintained properly. It's creating issues in terms of code. And it needs to be treated differently. So the recommendation, and I'd like council to think about it and then come back. We can discuss at the next meeting. Uh, I'd like to have a resolution at the next meeting where the city would uh, potentially rehabilitate what is there. And that could include a roof to help eliminate illegal dumping and make it more secure. And charging a user fee in terms of the corral. And along with that, the user fee would cover the cost of cleanup for the corral when it's not maintained. And the user fee would cover the regular cleanup. So if there's a spill or an issue with the corral, um, that would be taken care of. And in terms of the cleanliness of the corral, it would be taken care of. And this would potentially enhance not just the attractiveness, but increase the number of parking slots because we could potentially decrease the number of dumpsters that you might see. And if you're not And if you're not certain, this is adjacent to Orchard Street and the Grattan Avenue parking lot. And if we can start on that and then we'll talk about Haskell Place in a second. Is there any input or thoughts? We'll be bringing that forward. Tom Michaels.
Just, I guess, this all, some of this came about regarding the one business owner. And I looked into that. And I found that one of the, one of the lights that shine over this, this corral is actually out or not working or whatever the case may be. So it is not as bright as it should be in that location. And I guess that was a concern of the one business owner is, is dropping off trash at night over that way. So moving forward, let's make sure that the area is well lit.
Lighting, gotcha.
Who all uses the current corral?
I can't count them on one hand.
Do they, do they each have keys? I'm not really familiar with the whole, like the current system. So I guess I'd have to talk to people before I can.
They all have keys to their own gates.
And we're not, if there are questions, feel free to bring them forward. We're not asking for a vote or movement. But the goal here is to put the information in front of council so you're ready for it at our October 5th meeting.
Yep.
All right. And Troy, you wanted to talk about two dumpsters, one for recycling and one for trash that are currently located on Haskell Place.
Correct. You just mentioned prior to that that you're, one of your concerns was taking up parking spots, which they are taking up two parking spots. I know you reached out to them and I guess they rented two parking spots. But I think, as I mentioned the last meeting, you guys didn't want to hear it because we've got our executive session. But I'd like to make a motion that dumpsters got to be moved over towards where all the other dumpsters are at this point until we come up with a long-term solution.
So I understand that part of the issue is complaints from an adjacent property owner. So I did speak with the owner of the dumpsters and they've been relocated over another space, which puts it farther away from the initial property.
That's not the only complaint. So there's other complaints from other business owners that, you know, they have to walk all their garbage over there. I mean, I can name them all off if you want, but there's plenty of room over there for two more dumpsters until we saw, you know, come up with a long-term solution. As I stated before and talked to Rick, that we'd be willing to even give her money back for the parking spots.
So the conversations that I had with the one business owner, with the concerns that were put forward, moving them over a little bit, I thought was a reasonable compromise. But council, where do we stand?
Honestly, I'm confused about this one.
I think whatever, whatever makes a business owner happy.
I think, Tom, part of the question here is which business owner, how many? So Katie, maybe to clarify, there were two dumpsters that were in the corral. And they were moved by the business owner to behind a business. And the request came forward to relocate them. And in conversation with the business owner, said, okay, well, where it's at is currently parking. And if you pay for the parking permits, the resident permits, then that would accommodate. The issue, one of the issues, as Troy stated, is that those dumpsters, the neighboring properties make it less attractive. And I 100% agree. You know, this is not the best look for Haskell Place, nor is the dumpster corral the best look for that parking lot. And we really do need to tighten up not just the corral, but also the expectations for dumpsters. We're not screening dumpsters that are on private property that probably should be because we're going to see an increase in terms of demand for parking in the lots over the next two years as the DRI gets underway.
Yep.
Thank you.
And one other concern I see is that we're going to have to act on if we don't get these dumpsters moved. And I'm going to guarantee that two other businesses are going to request parking spots for them.
And Troy, I was just going to say, how long will it be before other businesses are going to say, hey, if these two can get away or this one business can get away with it?
Well, they're ready to come down after the last meeting. They told me, give me until this meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely correct about that.
I have to agree with you guys. To be real, you fellas, I don't, the more I think about this, I don't think it's a good idea to be giving up public parking spaces for dumpsters. I just, it just doesn't seem like a good use of public space. And especially what's going to happen once we get into the DRI, you know, it's just, I, you know, I understand, Mary, you're between a rock and a hard place here on this, but I think if we can just refund their money and give them back their money that they had paid and let's move those over to the corral. And you're right that we have to address that whole corral issue and and then it seems like it's a fair system. And then we're not taking up parking spaces, public parking spaces with dumpsters. I just don't think that makes, it doesn't make a lot of sense now. The more I hear about this issue. So that's where I stand.
When I get to, I agree with Troy. I drove by there this morning. And that just looks odd. And it's, it just.
None of this that I'm bringing up has nothing to do with the business they're behind. That's not the issue here. Just hope that point out. You think of somebody, the first time they park back there, they come into our town and they park back there and they get out of a car right next to the dumpster where they're looking to go get something to eat. I mean, that just is, it just doesn't set the right tone.
So we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Troy, what is the motion?
That we have to move the dumpsters over by the corral. There's two outside to the right of the corral right now. There's two more parking spots adjacent to that are usually empty. They can put them there and we refund their money.
I'm a slow rider. So a motion on the floor, move the dumpsters that are currently located on Haskell Place to spots that are adjacent to the dumpster corral next to Orchard. And to refund any fees paid with regard to the original dumpsters. So Troy made a motion. Is there a second? John Bennett, discussion.
Just make sure you also fix the lighting for people closing up their businesses at night.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh. All right, Carrie, seven oh. I will speak with the property owner tomorrow, the business owner tomorrow. Number seventeen, discussion regarding the state comptroller audit and further recommendations slash solutions to undertake. So this is something that's come up a couple of times and I want to give council an update and give the general public an update. One of the primary issues that was reviewed was credit card and credit card usage. And if you are unaware, the city did pass a new credit card policy. And there are, we accepted all of the recommendations that came forward from the comptrollers. And we have instituted policy changes with regard to credit cards. There was a big question in terms of hours. And now we start getting into what I would call some things that were a little bit more difficult to parse through. So one of the criticisms that the comptroller had of the city was department heads and accrual of hours. And in 1973, there was a resolution passed by the common council that said department heads would receive compensation no less than the unions that they oversee. It did not say equal to. It says no less than. And that's important to note because the comptroller then took the next step, the office, the representatives to say, we're going to compare this to the bargaining units, bargaining units that the individuals oversee. Even though that's not what the resolution stated. So we've had conversations in the past about this and what to work on. John Bennett at different points and helped out in terms of working on some of this stuff. But some things take a little bit more time. So we are in the process of signing contracts with not just department heads, but also a couple of employees who are not covered under collective bargaining agreements. And the comptroller was a little bit critical and they put dollar amounts. Hey, the city, it might cost this amount, that dollar amount. But the reality is, department heads in particular are not eligible for overtime. So there are hours and you can look at the screen right now and see how many department heads are here. This is part of the workday. There is not additional compensation for attending an evening meeting. So what do you do when you have people that are working in the evening, on weekends, potentially getting calls over the course of vacation, hey, even on sick time, when they've taken time, and dutyfully answering the calls and continuing to work very hard and very diligently for the city? On top of that, the comparison is not always a good, straight, fair comparison because some of the department heads in terms of evenings, weekend hours are being compared in the audit to unions who the oversee, who the membership works very hard. They do a great job, but the responsibilities are quite different. And the hours are quite different. You're talking employees who show up in the morning and are done at the end of the day. And for the most part, through the course of a year, they're working a regular schedule. Whereas you have a number of employees who have to be more flexible. So I had some concerns in terms of how the comptroller interpreted a number of items. And there were two things that council, you do not need to weigh in on this evening. But in our response, there was recommendations in terms of some of the credit card purchases and whether or not there was adequate and 100% sufficient support for purchases, whether or not some of that money should be repaid. And then there was also a question in terms of hours that were accrued by some employees and whether or not, well, what will happen with that? So moving forward, I got a couple of things. One, I had a request for us to more clearly define our vehicle uses policy in terms of who, when, and under what conditions for some of our vehicles. And in terms of accrual of additional hours, I've had a conversation with John McNerney, our youth bureau director. He was named in the report for a couple of things. He has worked very hard. He's worked very diligently and he has worked a lot of hours. And most recently, in terms of hours and addition to the youth bureau's workload, not just working within the city, but working on projects outside of the city, i.e. Gutches Park. So we are doing an annual contract with the town of Portlandville. And that annual contract, the city receives compensation for the youth bureau's work with the different parks in the town of Portlandville. When Gutches Park was being worked on, I know that John put in a lot of time and effort. And after it's been established, he and his coworkers have continued to put a lot of time and effort into it. However, there was no change in terms of compensation to the city for the increased workload. So Tom Williams, the supervisor for the town of Portlandville and I have started, we've initiated some conversations about the contract and what it should look like. And going forward, I've expressed my concern about how there was an increase in terms of work. And there was not an increase in terms of compensation, quite frankly, for the city and what we need to do to protect our taxpayers. If we are doing work and it's increasing, in particular outside the city, there has to be a change in terms of the agreement. But I want to ask council, and if it's not tonight, at some point next week or so, feedback in terms of other items that you would like to see addressed? Is there anything else that you would like to see in terms of our operations? Because as a reminder, the corrective action plan, it comes back. Well, there is a corrective action plan put forward, but the comptroller's audit, it does point out not just in terms of city staff and the mayor, but also the council in terms of our responsibilities and asking what we need to do to make sure we are living up to those responsibilities fully. Troy, back with, you had a hand up.
Well, I just want you to make a, or I'll make the statement, I guess, but just from you and all of us that the 1973 law, just to make sure that, you know, all department heads are at fault here. So make that clear. Not all department heads are at fault.
Agreed. And I would say that there's no department heads at fault.
Brian, I've looked at the recommendations from the comptroller and what we've done since that. And we have addressed just about all, if not all of those recommendations, at least as it comes to the council. I mean, your contracts are going to spell out the benefits. And Mac just sent us quite a bit of information on internal controls and make sure that the, all the leaves are are properly accounted for and signed off on by the appropriate individuals and our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. And, you know, I think, I think if we haven't fixed all of them, we have pretty much solved, resolved what the comptroller asked, at least what they wanted the council to do. So, you know, I appreciate the work that Mac and others and you have put into that and it looks like in the contracts and Rick and with the contracts. And I appreciate that because it looks like, you know, a lot of those things are being addressed. So going forward, we're not going to have to worry about this. And I know it's been a lot of work to put those contracts together. So thanks for everybody involved in that.
Were not significant changes. It was merely a tightening up, so to speak. Council, if there's further feedback, let me know. But we want to make sure that everybody is comfortable and confident in the job that is being done by all city employees. Number eighteen, we need to set a date for a, this would be a third public hearing if we do it at the next meeting regarding the abandonment of a portion of Albina Avenue. Council, are we comfortable with doing this at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And there is a couple of concerns that were brought forward by the Public Safety Commission. So there's a little bit that still needs to be sorted through. But I'm confident and I'm optimistic that we can address these without any real issues.
Brian?
Yes, Mr. Van Donson.
Between Nick and I and Ms. Ren from the hospital, we have resolved those issues. We are going to resolve the utilities and easements with easements as we do the transfer of title from the city to Albina Ave. And the hospital has agreed to make the repairs to the street scape after a utility is repaired so that the city won't be responsible for fauna or curbing or the parking alignments. They're going to do the street scape stuff. And I think that's what addresses all of the Department of Public Works's issues.
Outstanding work. Thank you to our Board of Commissioners for parsing through and coming up with recommendations that were practical to make sure that this is something that can go forward and meets the needs and the concerns of everybody. And nineteen, elimination, discussion on the elimination of health insurance coverage for city council persons and families. And I don't know, maybe this would have been better to have just discussed during the number seventeen, the discussion regarding the comptroller's audit. So point of information, there was a section of the audit that talked about council members and receiving health insurance. And I believe it was January of 2019 where council, we did have this discussion. And at the time, there was a resolution and it's in the minutes, there was a resolution passed that said anybody who was on council would be eligible to continue. Anybody elected would be able to receive health insurance. And once somebody was no longer in office, they would lose that opportunity. And there would be no. future opportunities for elected officials to receive health insurance. And that was again in two thousand nineteen. So I think that I'm not sure how that was missed in terms of the audit, but um I believe what that shows is that council was aware that uh there were people and approved people to receive health insurance. And now that it has been eliminated, if I am correct, we no longer have anybody on council who is receiving health insurance through the city.
That's correct. Kate or uh yeah, Katie was the last one.
Last person uh no longer serving and so the issue may be resolved. Is there further discussion?
No, I think you pretty much nailed it, uh Brian, that uh just want to make sure that uh that this uh this doesn't get overlooked uh moving forward.
Well, that was, I I thank you for bringing forward the question and giving us the opportunity to discuss it in public because I'm sure there's been a couple of people who may have been been uh aware and may have been concerned. And if there's any questions, more than happy to reach out. But yes, we have had the conversation and it is being addressed. Has been addressed.
Has been, yeah, yeah.
Past tense. Troy Beckwith, you had asked another agenda item, the opportunity to allocate some money for city hall cleanup. I know exactly where you're going with this, but I'll let you take the lead.
Just real quick, I'd just like to allocate up to two thousand dollars and get City Hall cleaned up. Clean up landscape or flower beds, waiting or whatever. I don't know if next guy's the other time or he can, you know, get a hold of the I don't know, are we still using Lewis at all being now? I don't care who you use, but we got to clean it up. It's not presentable at all.
Before the before the contractor that did City Hall was Black Mountain.
I don't care who we use, we just get it cleaned up.
We should do something about the entrance as well. And mark that well so that people um see the step, what's there.
Is it is it faded, Katie? I haven't I haven't noticed that.
It's kind of crumbling on one side.
Okay.
Yeah, it just
Front?
In the front, yeah. And I think some people don't see it because it doesn't stand out really well, so they misjudge it.
It used to be painted yellow, but it must have, it must not be any longer.
Why don't we, why don't we just eliminate the 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 step and just put a put a short ramp there?
Well, that's a whole nother discussion at this point, but to do a ramp like that, there's a lot of handicap stuff involving rounds and all that. Now you're you're getting in a whole different ballgame.
And then they're trapped once they get in there because it's just stairs up and stairs down.
Yeah, that's that's why you can't have a ramp out front because there's no accessibility once you get in the door.
Even if you tapered the step?
Well, you you could get inside, but then you can't go anywhere once you get in the foyer.
Right. What what I'm saying is couldn't we make the change without being considered a handicap accessible? Are you saying that we can't make the change or we'd have to go that route?
Uh I think the rear of the building is used for handicap accessibility.
It is.
Yeah.
My concern was just instead of putting a step there, just put a slight incline or decline.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'll look into it. No problem.
Then you don't have to worry about somebody uh not seeing the step or walking off too soon.
All right. So the Troy, a motion for two thousand dollars to assist with city hall maintenance. That is a motion, correct?
Um maintenance or lawn care or I don't know how you want to word it, but.
Yeah, I think it was more landscaping and lawn care. It was exterior.
All landscapes.
Yeah.
Clean up.
Do any plantings or anything, but I'd like to definitely see something. We'll talk about it later. We didn't spend enough time on it, but just got to get it cleaned up.
All right. But that is officially a motion from you, right, Troy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a second? Katie Siliman, discussion further? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, any opposed? Carries. And I asked for an executive session. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session? John Bennett, second. Troy Beckwith, do not anticipate any action af- after executive session. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the room is open. Figure out how to join. Always. There we go. All right, my microphone is on. It said recording in progress. I'm going to assume that we are recording. Yes. Council, we need a motion to adjourn from executive session. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in regular session. Council, is there any further business to come before you this evening? Hearing none. Siliman, second. Bruce Titler, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. It was a long and involved meeting. I appreciate everybody's time, patience and attention. Have a lovely evening.
Stay safe, folks.
Yep, you too.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.